What's the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
It's called the word. This time we have service recognition. This one is for 20 years of service for Donald Bennett. All right, there are two other ones, Richard Hennessy with the coroner's office for 15 years and Rita Lawson probation for 15 years, both of those couldn't attend today. We appreciate their service also. Item five.
Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
Second. Motion my commissioner, or motion my commissioner warrants, I have my commissioner Jean Greco to approve item five on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Well, should approve item number six.
Motion my commissioner Jean Greco say my commissioner warrant approve item six on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda.
Motion my commissioner warrant say my commissioner Jean Greco approve item seven on the agenda. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
Motion my commissioner Jean Greco say my commissioner warrant approve item eight on the agenda. Hiring Michelle Lutz to the finance enforcement office position, domestic relations. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion my commissioner warrant second by commissioner Jean Greco approve item nine on the agenda. Hiring Courtney Campfield of Kingsley to the domestic relations. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda.
Motion my commissioner Jean Greco say my commissioner warrant approve item ten on the agenda. Except we brought the resignation of Cameron Kettle from jail. Questions or comments? Yes?
What's the position of Cameron Kettle?
Ah, corrections office. All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 11 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion my commissioner warrant say my commissioner Jean Greco approve item 11 on the agenda. Prove hiring Gregory Rosar of Kingsley to the open corrections office position. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 12 is listed on your agenda.
Why'd you come up with eighty-nine thousand two fifty?
Is that what they sent him?
That's what I sent to the contract.
Who sent?
Progress Authority.
For nine months?
For nine months.
Did you talk to them about those nine months?
Yes.
Who'd you talk to? And what are we paying last year?
Seventy, a little over seventy-five.
For a full year, you're paying them eighty-nine two fifty for nine months?
I think there might have been leaded funds, some, for last year, and there's no more leaded funds.
We paid this off at almost a million dollars over the last 10 years, and what have we got returned for that money? Not much.
Right. And devastation of the county.
I will second the motion, so we have a second on it. Well, that's not entirely true. There is over three million dollars in revolving loan funds that this organization has that loans out to businesses, startup businesses and expansions, facilities like Diaz, expansion of the plant on Main Ave out here to get that going. And there's other projects that they've done throughout the county.
Okay, you mentioned Diaz, so how much of this money that they got, the revolving loans, have gone to the industry? And now they're in the tank, so how many of those businesses are going to go bye-bye here in the next?
None of the businesses they've got money loaned to are in the tank. And all the other ones that they've had previous have all been paid by.
And why is it just for nine months?
Nine months is what the contract was, but I don't think I'd be willing to do any more than nine months at this time. To make sure we have a proven concept.
And who's the head of the progress authority at this time?
Of course, run by board, the individual that's managing it is Tony Ventella.
So Tony's still on it?
Yeah.
Ventella? And what's his salary from that amount?
I have no idea.
And any new business coming into the county besides gas?
Besides the gas industry itself?
Yeah.
There are some ones that are being looked at right now, there's an IMG station, but these are all gas-related or byproducts of the gas. They are looking at, of course, they're looking at the expansion on the hospital to the administrative wing of the hospital and working on that. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Good to hear a no for a change.
Item thirteen.
You hear it quite a lot from me when we spend the money.
Make a motion to approve item number thirteen is listed on the agenda.
Is this the same outfit we were having trouble with as pulling their services out of the town?
No. This is the jointer with Jeremy. NHS is on here, but we use them from July through January sixteenth or whenever.
But the jointer was pulling out, right?
No, the NHS left us, left Susquehanna County. The jointer was like one of Susquehanna.
Yes. Is our facilities over at the plaza part of this?
Yes, Commissioner.
That's what they thought. And they're not there anymore, are they?
They gave us notice, they gave the county notice as of November fourteenth that they're no longer providing.
Who is "they"?
NHS of Northeast Pennsylvania.
And what is NHS, can somebody explain?
They're a human services provider that provide a breadth of behavioral health services.
And was that TRHA before, what would they call?
Tri-County.
Tri-County? So now it's, and what does NSH stand for, N?
Northwestern Human Services.
Human Services.
Any other question, here comes, you have a motion? Read on, a second, yeah?
I have a question. Yes. I'll ask the commissioner, can I get an example of some of the human services provided that are not provided by our school?
Well, there's all kinds of issues, there's people that have alcohol issues, there's people that have mental health issues, need counseling, need guidance, you know, that's just a couple.
Well, it says early intervention.
And there's early childhood intervention, there's early intervention for suicides, there's early intervention with mothers. There's 28 different providers there. So out of over millions of dollars that are spent, it's a hundred and twelve thousand that comes out of the local matching for all these social services.
That's Susquehanna County's match, that we pay for those services.
Right, right.
It's a hundred and twelve.
Can I, may I ask another question?
Hundred and twelve thousand?
What is the average salary of the people running this?
Well, there's 28 different organizations that are dealing with us. So there's 28 different groups that there are, and they're all very differently depending on what their services are and what they're doing.
Jer, you're going confused.
Sure.
We got the behavior NHS, they gave us notice to pull it out.
Yes.
But they're still listed here.
They're still listed here because these are the requests for approval for contracts for fourteen fifteen. So we were on a month-to-month contract with these organizations, and so NHS has provided care from the beginning of the year, which starts in July first and has continued to present. So they're currently providing care to individuals in Susquehanna County.
But where?
So individuals in Forest City are traveling down to Carbondale to receive services.
What about the people in Little Meadows?
We have another.
That's Susquehanna County.
Absolutely.
Where are they going?
We have another organization that is coming online to provide behavioral health services, outpatient services, an organization that is a federally qualified healthcare center.
Who's going to pay for them?
Through these contracts, we would pay for those.
But we already paid this NHS money for the year?
We've paid them per the service that they've delivered. We don't, we don't give this, these contracts are like a contract cap or a contract allocation, Commissioner. And then they bill us as they provide the service. So if they've said they're no longer providing the service, then we would no longer be paying them.
They don't get paid in upfront credit, so only one of them do the service.
But right now, we don't have service. Except for apparently a people in Forest City.
No.
We have service that is going in place.
No, we do have services. NEPA Community Healthcare has taken over, Dr. Lattimore is working out there.
Well, I thought that was still up in the air. Did they sign on with them? So is there still services over here at this plaza locally?
Goodwill Industries is still continuing to provide services there to people with intellectual disabilities and other developmental disabilities. So Dan, to your question, yes.
So we still have the same services, it's just being provided by a different provider?
Correct. And actually, in the long run, what we're hoping to do is get some additional providers in. I think, and I'll just kind of speak more openly about this, I think in the past NHS might have been a one-stop shop for folks, and I think ultimately what we'd like to do, Commissioner, is not only have NEPA come in and be one of our contractors, but have other providers come in so that people in Susquehanna County have choice of provider.
So we don't have much of a choice?
No.
Okay, any other question?
Yeah, how many people can you say this year, as opposed to the previous years, are being helped by all these 28 programs? Are the numbers going up? Are you noticing numbers going up for all the needs, you know, the intellectual, mental needs, emotional needs?
They tend to flow, kind of ebb and flow from year to year. Sometimes we see our early intervention program numbers go up, and those would be individuals that are birth to three that need different types of therapy, physical therapy, and so on. But relatively, we see that number remaining pretty flat.
And how many people you think you're helping in our county with all these programs? Do you have numbers, like total numbers, like say the total package? Are you helping like 20,000 people, 10,000 people?
It would be closer to, between, probably closer to 5,000.
About 5,000 people, which would be about 20% of the population.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll go to public comments.
I'm Ryan Martin, which is three now. I'm here as an advocate for someone who is on disability and is having, and having a problem with a furnace that was put in by TRHA. Marion has helped several times in calling Dennis Phelps to try and get things moving along. So far, nothing has happened. He's had at least eight people come, some of them the same, and look at the furnace and do little things and tell them, oh, you have to change the thermostat, oh, we need a pipe to outside for cold air return. And what happens is the furnace goes on and they are there. After two or three cycles, fumes come. He gets eyes that are watering, he gets throat that's burned, he gets numbing of the lip. And this is really a health hazard, first off, and second of all, he has to use portable electric heater to heat his little house. And we're not getting any results. Right before the meeting started, Marion called Dennis again, and I just got a message that someone called them. Oh, they were supposed to come out yesterday, a new contractor, because obviously the current contractors are not fixing situations.
Who put the furnace in?
TRHA.
TRHA didn't physically go there and do it?
No. I think it was Lindsey, but I'm not positive, but they're the people that have been coming. So the last thing was that they were going to get a new contractor to look at this stuff, but this has been going on.
For eight times, or does not going to get it away?
Pardon me?
They've sent the same people there eight times and they don't get it fixed?
Well, they've sent two or three different people, but one of the guys was there four times and said, I don't smell anything, but of course his clothes have fuel oil all over it anyway. But anyway, they were supposed to come yesterday, they didn't call, they didn't show up. He just exited and said he got a call as a result of your phone call saying the guy wouldn't walk the road, but they still didn't call or anything. I have been taking this fellow to Geisinger approximately twice a week since last June. Not necessarily connected with this, but it might be because of the fumes. And I think this is absolutely ridiculous, and it's going on this long with no concrete solution. Either a new furnace or somebody who knows what they're doing. He just said that, when they just called, that they're going to send out someone tomorrow morning. But I would hope that you would help in that, all of you would follow up on this. Because I can imagine how many people are going through the same kind of thing. I don't think this is an isolated case. And one of the guys that came out told them that they have had to replace other furnaces. In fact, this furnace was a replacement because the heat exchange was messed up the last time. I'm hoping that you three can help, and I'm hoping that the press will make some indication to push TRHA to do something. They're the ones that give out the contracts, the furnace guys, right?
Well, you would think after, if they're using the same contractor or having repeated problems with new furnace, they change contractors. Cheapest is not always best, and this may be a prime example.
Right.
Or you don't always go with the lowest price, you get what you pay for.
Well, Marion's been helping out, she must have called Dennis six, eight times.
The conversation I just had with him before the meeting was they were going to replace the furnace.
But didn't they tell you that once before too?
They were thinking about replacing the furnace.
But now they're going to replace it?
But now they're saying they're going to replace it.
Okay, is that, are they going to let you know when this is done?
Well, I just hope that this isn't something that's going on with a lot of people, because in this.
Well, maybe we'll find out now if it is.
In this kind of weather.
It's not the hunting for.
And this has been going on since November at least, if not since last spring.
But why wouldn't these other people be calling if it is a problem? If someone else is saying the problem is.
Well, I know, I know this person would not have called on his own. Just because sometimes
Well, I think some people may not be willing to call because they got the furnace for free, they got the services for free, and now they don't want to complain about it.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't end up in session well, which I'm not confronting you, I'm asking you for help.
Well, it sounds like Marion talked to Dennis this morning, it sounds like it's getting replaced, and Marion's going to be talking to Dennis.
But here's what I would say, that I would pass along while you're talking to them. Have a different contractor put in a new furnace. Let's not have the same guy keep doing the same bad job.
And maybe even a different brand of furnace, because if this has been happening, that they have to replace them.
Or maybe different contractor would say this isn't what you need. To luck, absolutely. Thank you.
It may not, it sounds similar, if it's chimps coming back in, maybe it would be the chimney or exhaust.
No, that was, well, the chimney was checked.
It was?
Unless the front one's got a crack in it, it's the one off the front.
I guess the gun part, it's like a Miller gun, like the trailer, it jumped and hit the door at one point. And I don't know if it was right after that, but it seems like every time they come out and say, oh, it's okay now, there's oil sitting in the bottom of the firing area, which gets hot and, and then he has to shut it off, open the door, you know, and let some, let all those fumes out. But, I mean, I think they could have bigger problems if people really get sick and/or worse.
I would sue them and send it down and get it replaced, it sounds like the guns was firing too.
Well, and something is leaking oil or who knows what. A lot of furnace dangers.
Anyone else?
Last night, we went to the, a group of us went to the planning commission meeting, the county meeting, and we had a number of residents complain about compressor stations, the noise, and our concerns about it, besides the noise, the constant industrial noise that people are being subjected to, and the emissions, the toxic emissions that are constant. We had a number of people testify, and then the commission, we had at least two nays. Two people, it was some progress, two people said no to approve it on the board. Four said yes. So they approved again another compressor station in our county, we're up to 40. I called Bradford County yesterday and asked their planning commissioner, how many do you have in Bradford County? They're bigger than us, they have more wells, they have 25. So for some reason, we have a good number more, and we're being subjected to this. And I just want to say that I object as a resident that this commission, which is also somehow headed and influenced by all of you, is continuing to just approve one after another throughout our county. Every two to four miles, we're getting them, and we're being subjected to this, to the noise. And then the one of the residents who was supposed to come in last night, the Tuttle, Ben Tuttle, he had a seizure right before he was supposed to come. And he has a brain injury which is being aggravated by the noise, the constant industrial noise, and he had a seizure again. And he wasn't able to make the meeting, the family had to take care of him. So we're getting medical issues besides all the other disturbances and the exposures. And for you, the commissioners, you need to do something to help us as we're being totally industrialized and taken over by this industry that basically is interested only in profits, and we are being the sacrificial lambs for their profits. And I also want to object too to Alan Hall that I heard from Bob Templeton yesterday that you, I wanted to see records. I've been asking for records, and I've been able to see any public records in the planning commission up to yesterday. And anything that's been shown in previous meetings and discussed is now a public record. And then when he asked, mentioned something to you, you told him that I need to now submit a right to know to see the file for Miller compressor station. And a right to know delays my observance of those records up to a month. So it's not transparency in our government, it's not easy for now for residents to get access to records so that we can see what's happening to us, and then we can make more of an informed response at the meetings. So I just want to say, why did you do that? Why would you now insist on right to know, which you did not insist on before, anybody else on this commissioner's board? So I want to object to that and say that this is not leading to transparency or helping us as residents get informed so we know what's happening to us in a fuller extent. So just to let everybody know, another one was approved, and I'm objecting to it as a citizen, and we need to get legal representation to somehow defend our rights so that we are protected. You need to have better soundproofing. You have soundproofing in your regulations for the county. What kind of soundproofing if we can hear sounds a mile away? That's, what kind of soundproofing is that? What does that mean? You need to have better muffling of the gas releases. Just like Mike said, he heard a gas release near his home last meeting for 12 hours, and they sound like jet planes. We need to have better muffling. What is a muffling if I hear it, and we all hear it, two miles even away? So something needs to be drastically improved, or you need to enforce your ordinances in a proper manner. Plus, get a noise meter, which we've been asking you for two years, and spend money. I looked up one noise meter, calibrated, and it was about $400. I think you can afford 400 since you spent $4 million on the building here to revamp it for gas.
Okay, I'm going to cover the same thing except a little bit differently. First of all, that meeting last night was null and void, Mike is a lawyer. They announced it publicly, being at that building over there. They changed the venue, did not announce it publicly. That means everything that was done last night is null and void. Mike knows that I'm going to file a complaint with the Open Records Act in sunshine, and knows they're going to kill everything that happened last night at that meeting. Why would I do that? Number one is, last night was a joke, Thomas Moncker was there. I'm reading your own SALDO rules. One of them is 710.4, local, state, and federal regulations. All operations shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, rules, and regulations. They can't just ignore Hartford's rule, which is what they tried to do last night. And your solicitor came in, and he, in front of everybody, said, I may be right or wrong, that means he's not solid on this, and said, we're just going to override Hartford's more strict rule. You had multiple families that members there last night saying they live right near it. The noise is ridiculous, and we're not even talking about odors. Here's another problem. Two of the board members argued with the rest of them and said, they only tested one engine, and it's already at 48 dB. There's five engines. So they looked at each other, what happens when they all five go onboard? And guess what? When they do, there is no follow-up. The county's putting themselves in legal jeopardy, we're done. Number 40 is where we draw the line. We're done. We're suing the county, we're going to sue the planning commission, we're going to sue Williams. You know why? Because this is a game. Every time you look at their documents, they're a little 1 dB under the level that they can have maximum to meet the county standard. They're lying to everybody in their submission. Then you guys perpetrate the lie through the planning commission in here by letting them get away with it. When they go online, they're at 80 dB at somebody's front door, and nobody here has a noise meter. So we're going to catch, the catch 22 is, you can't override Hartford's law and rule if you have no way to test it. Remember what I said last meeting? Five grand on a flagpole, we can't buy a meter, figure out who can operate it. So you're violating your own SALDOs, including the noise. There is no soundproofing and blow-down silencers and mufflers. Zero on the other 39 we've approved. So we're done at number 40. Here's number two. The shale gas industry is dead in the water. Every, I've got 100 articles now. Dead. The price is at 58 cents. This is Lou Diamico, who's the president and executive director of Pyoga, Pennsylvania Independent Oil and Gas. Oil and gas prices have historically experienced boons and busts, relatively small imbalance of energy supply and demand can cause huge upswings and down in price. Some film-surprising producers have hoped the shale gas boom would end the volatility, it didn't. I used to tell people when the shale play broke that it was going to end the cycles, Diamico said, but I was wrong. We're kind of a short-sighted industry. You know what's short-sighted? Right now, you're remodeling this building and putting gas in. Do you know what's going to happen to the price of gas when they stop the rigs? It's going to jump right through the roof again. So what used to be cheaper to run the old way that this was done, did we leave, did we leave the old school in here? No, we did not. Almost every school that's invited gas in has kept in their, their other furnaces so that they can turn them on if the price gets too high. We haven't. There we go. The industry lies to all of us and says we're going to have low-priced gas, and then they flip it. The problem is, there's a new list too. Of the worst offenders of the environmental issues, Capital and Gas number one with 265 violations, Chesapeake number two, Range number three, Chief number four, XTO number six, Southwestern number eight. I'm getting tired of them lying to the people that we elect. And they, oh yeah, everything's fine, they're our buddies. We don't want to upset these guys, they're going to leave. I don't care if they leave, matter of fact, they can go. We're at 40, we still don't have one idea of what's coming out. When we get the funding to really test one of these facilities and what's coming out of them, and we find out that the formaldehyde and benzene and tall human levels are high enough to endanger human and animal health, we're going to sue the holy hell out of everybody involved, because you should have done it on the first one. The county should have tested the first one. And if whoever put it in, you should have said, great, you told us it was 50 dB, that's our rules. Now you have to prove after. Why do we let an engineer come and test it when it's one engine going, and we all cited off and everything's great?
One or two.
And then, then sit three months later, they fire them all up, and it's running at 80, and we have no way to follow up. That's breaking the law. You're violating your own law. Your own law is 50 dB, you have no way to enforce it, we're getting tired of it. We're drawing the line at 40. You have multiple families getting involved, we have lawyers coming onboard, and you don't have a chance in hell of defending it properly because your own attorney was questioning and saying, I may be wrong, I may be right, right in front of everybody last night. The planning commission wanted to say no to it, but they're afraid of getting sued. By who? The industry is broke. Go ahead and let them try, just say no. We asked for a no, they've said yes 39 times. We asked for one no for a valid reason. Hartford has a better noise ordinance, and it should be enforced. Any law or rule or regulation passed by a local community should be respected. You don't get to come and mow it down because you're the big bad county unless you're willing to enforce it yourself, and obviously you're not. So I would, yeah, I would appreciate you guys, first of all, I'm going to kill the meeting last night, I want all. I want all three of you at the next one, because we're not going to allow them to make number 40 happen. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion to adjourn. Sign, all in favor?
Aye.